So we will now have our final pre-registered speaker, Abraham Musafi. After we finish with the pre-registered speakers, in order to make sure we can hear everyone, we're going to move to two minutes per speaker. So after Mr. Musafi, everyone will have two minutes so we can hear every single person. I promise he will stay here until you're done. Thanks so much. Mr. Musafi?
Thank you for the whole board that allows us to really speak. I'm a landlord. I'm a small landlord. My name is Abraham, and I'm honest as Abe Lincoln. I say I feel bad for the tenant. The tenant should know they have a right to know where the security is, and the landlord must put the security on account. And the bank give .05. The bank should give you at least 2%, 3%, 4%. Let the politician that come talk for you to worry about your money sitting in the bank and give you the right interest, not cheating you, boy, and give you .05. And another thing is that nobody addressed that thing from the landlord. We becoming little by little into hotel business because every tenant bring some more people in the apartment. I have an apartment. I have an apartment. I rented it to one person, and he allowed to bring a roommate. It's one-bedroom apartment. And each guy, each person bring his girlfriend. So now I have four people living in an apartment. My water bill, my water and sewer bill goes up. I don't have to tell you. I have the tax bill here. Last year was $41,300. This year is $51,000. So it went up by $4,000. So you tell me how much it is. 5%, 6% went up. So really, and all the tenants, be careful what you wishing for yourself. If the small landlord, listen, hear me out first. If the small landlord will be out of business, and we're going to be bought by a big corporation, you're going to have to talk to big corporation, which is you're not going to talk to anybody. You're going to end up talking to the walls. Nobody going to hear you. And everybody knows it's really cost money to keep, to upkeep the building. I'm one of the landlord. I know of the other landlord. I upkeep the building, and it's costly. The reason I compete better than other landlords, because I do, I'm an air conditioning mechanic, and I do more than 50% of my repair by my own hand. And I just came from the job myself. That's why I was late. I almost didn't make it on time. So it's very costly to do, to hire outside contractors. It's very costly. I don't have to tell you guys. And by the way, if you listen to 10/10 News, they tell you we are the small landlord, the landlord period. We are giving enough money to support the neighborhoods. We have mechanic working for us. We have cleaning people, and we supporting, we supporting a lot of business for the neighborhood, I mean, for the entire city by really giving a service from plumbing, from heating or anything. So all the money is just not going to go to our pocket. It's all comes in and goes right out.
Thank you, sir.
And we have also, we have, we bought, as any other business, we supposed to make so much money. Maybe you guys, as a guide, let us know how much money the landlord should make, and then we take it from there. And the city use our own buildings, and they constantly pumping money. Even the bicycle, the blue bicycle in the city, now they have to pump $2, $3 million. What happened? It's all rented. Every time I see the rack, it's all been taken out.
Okay, sir. Sir, I think a board member has a question.
So I really appreciate what you're saying, and I hear what your plight is, but I mean, I want to, I want to hear your solution because majority of the units, the rent stabilized units are owned by large businesses. Two-thirds of the apartments are by large landlords. And what we hear a lot of these stories of tenants who are struggling, being harassed. Are you suggesting that we treat small landlords differently than we treat large landlords in New York City?
No, 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 no. I don't want no exception, but I have to let them know. They know the right. They have to put their money in security. They have to give them all the rights. They have to do the repair. There is a reasonable time to make the repair. They have to know that they have rights, but one landlord, they have one right to be paid on time and to pay the rent.
But if we, based on the data we have, and we can see net operating income going up, and we, and all landlords agree to open their books, and we can look at it, but until that moment, we can only go by the information we have. And the information we have says that based on net operating income, owners are doing better, and based on the data we have, tenants are not getting increases in the salaries, and they're struggling, and evictions are up. So we're looking at that data and then trying to make decisions. So based on all that information, doesn't, isn't it logical to try to balance down those interests?
Okay, question for you. I think that all the people that they cannot make it, the government should help them, and not the local government. The federal government should help. We all paying taxes for that purpose before they giving money out to different third-world country. They should help the people here.
Unfortunately, we don't have the power. We have one power. The power is to set the rent guidelines. That's the power this body has. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Barbara Smith? Ms. Barbara Smith? Ms. Barbara Smith? Ms. Barbara Smith? So it turns out we have one additional pre-registered speaker who didn't get the right form, so we'll give Mr. Williams three minutes, and then we'll give the final registered speaker three minutes, and then we'll move to two minutes. So you've got three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Lady, and the desk. I'm here today hoping for rent freeze. My name is Thomas Williams, and I'm a strong committee member of the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. I live, I've been in New York more than 50 years, coming from Virginia. During this time, I've lived in Brooklyn, Queens, and back to Brooklyn, which is a very beautiful borough and growing. Due to the low rent for the, from the '60s to the '90s, now that I'm a retiree from the New York City Police Department, I'm encountering unbearable high rent and more fees that my landlord adds to the rent. I'm here today to ask you to have a conscience and a human heart for people who are older and are being forced out due to higher rents and unaffordable rents. We're on a fixed income, so the rent and our income doesn't match. We don't get an increase every year, as landlords do. Developers like David Kramer of the Hudson Company are now coming to our neighborhoods to build luxury towers where studios cost $1,900 a month. Who is that affordable to? On my, on my salary, I definitely can't afford that a month with a few so-called affordable apartments, but we know these are not affordable for us. We see the gentrification and the change in our neighborhoods in the last few years. Ms. Willard is part of Hudson Company, and she sits before us on this rent guideline board. As Ms. Willard fight here for landlords and her company, Hudson is fighting to build a 23-story luxury tower in our neighborhood. That will push our families and cause rent hikes within the area. Ms. Willard, I'd like to say on a personal base, we understand you work for Hudson Company, who is very rich, and we don't expect you to vote for people like seniors and poor people being pushed out of their apartments. But the rest of the board, we are asking you today to have a conscience and a heart when you make a decision about the rent. We ask you to agree to a zero rent freeze now, not tomorrow, now. We need that so desperately.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Hello. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Leah Margulies, and I am a member of the Prospect Park East Network. We are a network of owners, homeowners with tenants, and tenants of rent-stabilized apartments in the Prospect-Lefferts-Garden neighborhood. Our neighborhood, Prospect-Lefferts-Garden, is the densest in Brooklyn with two corridors of affordable rent-stabilized low-rise buildings on Ocean and Flatbush. We are a diverse, mixed-income neighborhood with a median income of less than $42,000, whereas the Park Slope neighborhood, for example, on the other side of the park, has an $80,000 median income. The Hudson Company is a developer who claims to support affordable housing while building a 23-story luxury unit overshadowing Prospect Park in our low-rise neighborhoods, is leading the displacement of long-term, low-income residents already living in actually affordable apartments. That's why we're actually in favor of the rent freeze. This 23-story luxury tower with studios going for around $1,900 will skew the market rents in our neighborhood and threaten the rent-stabilized tenants. It will trigger rent increases throughout Prospect-Lefferts-Garden, pushing out lower-income renters and jacking up market rents in the smaller buildings and homes. Rent-stabilized tenants will be harassed with the goal of taking units out of rent stabilization, and this is already happening, plus it happens all over the city. Landlords are raising rents and giving shorter leases to the local small businesses to be replaced by fancier stores, and later even by big-box stores. Think of Harlem. Soon the neighborhood will have lost its community character, and its truly affordable housing base will be gone. Through its political connections, Hudson raised $72 million in state funds and $5 million in a federal tax breaks to build 203 luxury units and 51 so-called affordable units, even though they're only affordable for 35 years. That's the 80-20 program. It's not really an affordable program, and it needs to be fixed. We, the taxpayers, are paying, financing the luxury development in our neighborhood. 80% of their financing is in state financing, but we're getting 20% affordable apartments, and they're not even really affordable? So are we going to lent, let an irresponsible company determine the rent increases for rent-stabilized apartments throughout New York City? That's really, really irresponsible. So please, don't do that. Don't let an irresponsible developer determine rent increases for rent-stabilized tenants.
Thank you, Ms. Margulies. And then Linda Perry? Milford Montrose? Milford Montrose? Excellent. Thank you. Let me know like that. It's very helpful.
Good evening to the board. My name is Milford Montrose. I'm a part of the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. My response would be brief. The speaker number one, I, I would like to offer the following response. He may mention that all of the repairs are done by themselves. I beg, I beg to differ because if the repairs are done in-house, they're not complying with EPA regulation. For example, the building that, where I reside, 3413 Avenue H, Apartment 4A, each time a repair needs to be done, the contractor subcontract, and when they come, none of them are qualified EPA. For instance, mold. I, the city of New York, at taxpayers' expense, trained me not only where to find mold, where to find lead, and where to find asbestos, but I have had the opportunity in seeing films from HPD. And with that knowledge, I went further in becoming a supervisor in asbestos, a supervisor in lead, and a supervisor in mold. Now with that information, I am deemed a threat to my landlord because I have said to my fellow tenants, one, call 311, register the complaint, because in litigation, the force you go after is the city. And then the city, you go to the landlord, and then you go to, oh, what? The city is already identified by the landlord. So the city give you one year and, I believe, one week, and you would never win against the city. So what happens? The landlord is going to send individual to do some work. They come and they take the paint, and they paint everything, and they say, that's okay. And then after three, three months, the darkness shows up. Now, I've said this to my fellow tenants. You go to landlord tenant court with all these pictures, and you show the darkness, the judge will just look at you like that. What you need to do is to submit scientific evidence, which is acceptable within the community, for I versus the United States. With that, first you have someone who is qualified, who would take the sample, chair of command, and then take it to a qualified lab.
Sir, it sounds like you have enormous expertise, and it's very helpful to your community, so we appreciate that.
Yes, however, I am deemed the bad person because, this is the reason. When I came into that apartment building, my wife was living there. By marriage, I applied to be on the lease. The landlord say, okay, send the marriage certificate. But I send the marriage certificate, nothing.
Sir, as you probably know-
Then he asks for numerous other documents.
Sir, as you probably know, we, we don't have any authority over individuals.
No, but the landlord is saying, it's the city, it's the city, it's the city. They're not taking any responsibility.
And we will, we will carry, we will carry your concerns to the city.
So I would like to leave you with that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That when we speak to the landlord, they're saying, it's the city, it's the city, it's not us.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, zero, zero. This is all what we asking for, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Please, thank you.
Is Linda Perry here?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. You've spent a lot of time. We appreciate it. It's clear to close observers of this process that we're heading for a one-year rent freeze this year, so I want to talk about the consequences of that. If we, if you have a one-year lease at 0% for this upcoming period, every single tenant in this room, whose lease expires, is going to take a one-year 0% lease. Next year's deliberations, every tenant who's coming off a two-year lease is going to be up for renewal, and they will be demanding the same 0% increase. So you, right? They know it. They know it. So you already have two years of zero. Now, I know this is being sold as, hey, this is a one-off event, we're going to do zero, you need, it's a rent holiday, tenants need a break. But once you start doing zeros, look what happened for hotels. You did it, this board many years ago, did a zero for hotels. There has never been an increase for hotels ever since.
Please, please-
So you're on a very slippery slope.
Please let's hear the testimony.
I know you're dedicated to looking at the data that's before you, but when you look at this data again next year, it's going to look exactly like it does this year. And it's not only because the data takes two years to come in. It's because a lot of buildings in the city will not be affected by the rent freeze. The 421A buildings, 421C buildings, 421G buildings, all those buildings will continue to get rent increases, and there will be increases coming off of vacancies and MCI improvement. So you'll be looking at the same numbers that you're looking at today, next year, and the year after that. So you simply don't have the numbers right now to justify a 0% rent increase. You will not have it next year. You will be locking future boards, not only this board, but future boards into a disaster series of zero increases, which will result in deteriorating housing conditions. My time is up. Let me just point out to you that we've distributed a package. There are two editorials, one each from the New York Post and the Daily News, that talk about the folly of a zero rent increase. I urge you to read those. You have some other material. Thank you very much.
And then John Severos?
My name is Lynn Orenstein. I'm 70 years old, and I've lived in the same building in Park Slope for almost 40 years. Since I've retired, I've become even more involved in my neighborhood. I know so many of my neighbors and their children. I volunteer as a financial coach at a local church. I help out in a nearby soup kitchen. I'm involved in starting an organization to help the elderly stay at home. I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors, and I love my life here. I believe landlords are entitled to a decent profit on their investments. My former landlord made such a profit, but in November, my building was sold to a private firm with assets in Europe and the United States. According to its website, it, quote, "has a reputation for its ability to identify unique investment opportunities, execute favorable acquisition strategies, and maximize the return to its investors." The new landlord has already given the non-stabilized tenants in my building a notice to evacuate, even though some of them said they'd pay the market rent. They've told the remaining tenants that they have big plans for improving the building. They brought many architects with them when they introduced themselves. We are now facing major capital improvements. According to my lawyer, the legal rent that is used for all future renewal and rent calculations goes up by the whole MCI the moment it is approved. The legal rent on my apartment could instantly double or more. So if the RGB raises a 3% increase, it could effectively be 3, 6% or more to me. Moreover, I would have to pay an additional 6% increase each year until the MCI was paid off, making my annual rent increase a whopping 12% when I can no longer afford to pay these increases. I have to leave the city. My apartment will be destabilized, and one more affordable apartment will be lost. I'm actually lucky. I'm not being told to evacuate my apartment right away, but my home, my life, is being ripped from me in slow motion, one large increase at a time, so my landlord can maximize returns to his investors. To give me and my fellow New Yorkers a fighting chance to stay in our homes, to show that the lives of people in this city have value over and above the excessive profit we create for others, I ask you to freeze the RGB increases.
Thank you, Ms. Orenstein.
Thank you for hearing me.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I hope tonight everybody will understand my conversation. Even my English is not too good, but I have to come tonight. Everybody crying for freeze rent, right? Can the landlord or homeowner crying for freeze the tax, freeze the water? No, we can. May 26th, there's a new to all homeowner. If they pay water bill or tax late to certain amount, they will put the lien, okay? And then they will sell the lien, make them lose the property. There's a homeowner, I learned from the newspaper, they only own $200 or $94, they lost their own home. 1950, Maryland, China, there's a lot of people jealous the homeowner. They torture them, they rob their money, they rob their jewelry, and then they throw them out of the house. They make them homeless. My parents was like that, and all of the people from the world never go to Maryland, China, because they communist. I have been here 37 years. I feel proud to let everybody know, I'm single parent for three kids, one, two, three years old. Everybody told me, get the welfare. At that moment, I could get $1,700, 30 years ago, but I don't. I told everybody, I want use my intelligence and my energy to raise my children. I feel proud, let everybody know, your education can change your fate. You have no money? Look at everybody, Mr. Harvey. Look at them. They look very nice. They dress are nice. They, all the nails beautiful. They look like millionaire.
Let her finish, please. Let, please let her finish.
They have no money for the rent.
Please, let her finish.
Okay.
Let's please let her finish.
Four, five years ago, there's a lot homeowner lost their rent, the home on, their home, their house, their building. Maybe you don't know it. I'm a little say Asian. I tell you, a lot of people cheat the welfare. A lot of people get-
Ms. Lee, Ms. Lee?
A lot of people get food stamp. You don't have money. You could get food stamp, you could get Medicaid.
Ms. Lee, Ms. Lee?
We cannot.
Ms. Lee?
We create our money by our own.
Ms. Lee?
I don't have it.
Ms. Lee? Ms. Lee, your time is up.
Hold one second.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Hold one second. I encourage my children.
Wait, Ms. Lee? Okay, okay, let's, please, okay, let's, let's not make this personal.
No, no matter 5%, 4%,
Ms. Lee?
Every, four years, four years, the minimum is like 5% to 5 and 1/2%.
If the room could be quiet, please, we'd be able to finish this.
Excuse me.
Ms. Lee, Ms. Lee, your time is up, and we appreciate your testimony.
I'm not finished.
You have finished.
Every four year, only like 5 and 1/2 years.
Ms. Lee, we have heard you, and we appreciate your testimony. Okay, if, 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 we can't hear anyone, if everyone keeps, again, we understand passions are high. This is important to all of us, but in order to hear each other, we have to be able to listen. Michael Bistrick, who's here for Councilman Gentile?
Yeah, I just want to remind people, if they haven't signed up to testify, we encourage people to do that. I think we're leaving testimony, signing up time until eight. And I just want to be clear, just, I want to say this. We believe people are hardworking, tenants and landlords, right? This is not about people, the way they look, the way they dress. This is about choices we make as a city. We want to be clear about that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is-
Good evening, and let's everyone please listen to the representative, representative for the councilman, please. Thank you all so much.
My name is Michael Bistrish, and I'm representing Councilman Vincent J. Gentile, whose testimony I have here. Tonight, I lend my voice to the chorus of tenants, community groups, tenants, and how- Tonight, I lend my voice to the chorus of tenants, community groups, tenants and housing rights advocacy organizations and legal service providers in support of a rent freeze. Historically, the voices of tenants have largely been ignored by the Rent Guidelines While New York City landlords have been compensated in excessive, thanks to years upon years of rent hikes, economic inequality is the defining issue and challenge of our time and this is a problem that this board can help alleviate through its decisions at this crucial juncture. Rent increases are the smoking gun for they have directly contributed to the affordability crises low-income tenants face in New York City circa 2014. Based on your own data showing sky-high landlord profits, this board should freeze rents for rent-stabilized tenants this year. The overcompensation of owners over the last decade has led to increased profits which were made on the backs of rent-stabilized tenants. Indeed, a report issued by the board shows that the owner net operating incomes are 31.5% higher than they were in 1990, while the average amount of rent paid by stabilized tenants has increased to 34.9% of household incomes, the highest rent burdens ever recorded, with over a third of all rent-stabilized households paying more than 50% of their income towards rent. During this past decade, the board has completely ignored the mandate of the rent stabilization law, which requires board members to consider cost of living increases for tenants in rent-stabilized housing. Instead, the board has focused almost exclusively on owner cost increases authorizing unwarranted rent increases. It is time for the Rent Guidelines Board to correct its course. Consecutive rent increases have deepened economic inequality and severely worsened New York City's affordable housing crisis. Let's put the welfare of the renters first by voting no on an increase and yes to a
Yoke Ting Eng, Yoke Ting Eng, and if I mispronouncing it, please correct me.
I just want to make a quick announcement about language again, since apparently we've had a flow of people. Quiero recordarle a todo el mundo que solamente habla español, que puede dar su testimonio en español, y tenemos un intérprete que le puede traducir todo lo que ustedes digan. Siéntase en cómodo en hablar y estamos aquí para oírlo. Queremos que ustedes sepan que el intérprete está aquí y va a estar disponible de que ustedes lleguen a testificar.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Trineng and I'm speaking instead of my husband, who's here today.
Could you speak into the mic, ma'am, so we could hear you?
Thank you. Members of the Rent Guidelines Board, my name is Trineng and I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening and tell you why I feel that the Rent Guidelines Board must approve a fair increase this year. I have a 16-unit building in Brooklyn. I have made numerous repairs and improvements to this building over the last six years that I've owned it. I've replaced a broken boiler, I've replaced, I've repaired sidewalks, and numerous other things. I have a very good relationship with my tenants and I'm always reachable and I address all of my tenants' concerns as soon as possible. My property tax has been increasing by double digits every year for the last several years. This year, it is a 21% increase and I don't know what next year will be. My water and sewer bill gas has gone up as well. In addition to these fixed costs, unexpected costs come up all the time. For example, this past winter, a sanitation truck struck down a tree in front of my property and tore up the sidewalk. I've had to spend thousands of dollars replacing that part of the sidewalk, which, I have to emphasize, did not result in an MCI increase to any of my tenants. I realize that this is a tough economy, but it affects everyone and it affects me as well as my tenants. It is not fair for me to bear the burden of these increasing tax and operating costs alone. I have two units that are renting below $800 and these units don't even cover their operating expenses. Even though you have the incredible task of coming up with the one-size-fit-all to a problem that is hardly one size, I ask that you consider voting for a 6% increase for a one-year lease and a 9.5% increase.
Let's let her finish, please.
And a 9.5% increase for a two-year lease. These are tough times for everyone, but if small owners are driven out of the business, there will be serious deterioration to community and affordable housing stock in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Excuse me. Sorry.
George Finley.
Sorry. Excuse me, I have a question. I have a question. Thank you. Two things, there is hardship applications with DACR and I hope you would take advantage of that, but I would like to ask you if you were interested in potentially opening up your books next year so that we can get a better understanding of landlords for small businesses like you and the hardship that you are going through.
I would have to speak to some of the people in the association, see how well that is. I mean, I'd be open to...
Please let her answer.
I would be open to think about that possibility.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I think you have one more question from the board.
I should have one more question. Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I just, I am losing my patience with a misperception about, and this is not directed to you, but misperception about profit margins and the concept of profit, owner profit. I think that a calculation is misguided in a lot of people's minds and I want to clarify something. Net operating income does not mean profit. And I, I understand where my fellow board members are coming from on most matters, but this in particular continues to be pervasive in the questions that you ask of the tenant, of the, of the owner representatives that are coming up, and it is, profit margins, which, by the way, is not a calculation that anyone has provided here. Profit is also a calculation that has not been, that is not available to us. I don't think that asking the speaker to open up her books is going to be giving us any information that we need to be making this decision. So I apologize that you were asked if you're going to open up your books. I, I find this line of questioning to be unacceptable.
Thank you.
George Finley, then John Faust. George Finley. John Faust, Mr. Finley? Mr. Faust, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Faust. Own a small unit out in East New York, 20 units. I heard someone say they came here 30 years ago. Well, I came here over 15 years ago. I worked three jobs. Not one, not two, three jobs. Now, I invite any one of you here, all, all nine of you, come out to my building unexpectedly. Don't make an appointment, talk to any of my tenants in there. See, landlords are not the terrorists that you all, some people seem to display them as. Let me tell you something, let me tell you something. If you, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll open my books if you can get my all the tenants to open up their doors and see who live in there and who not on their lease and who, who making money. I'll open my books if you do that. If you not open that door, I'm not gonna open my books. Now, I'll tell you this, I went into over a million-dollar worth of debt to renovate a drug-infested building. It's my problem and it's my building and if you want to live it, you got to pay a decent rent so I can pay my bills. It's just that simple. I don't know where people get the idea that they can live rent-free. Everyone was, most of us in here drove here. We drove here. You, you pull up to the gas station, you know what, you know what fuel costs. You know exactly what fuel costs.
Mr. Faust, Mr. Faust, it's actually harder to...
Twenty years ago.
Thank you.
What it cost me now for heat and hot water in one month, that's what I was paying all year long. Taxes are ridiculous. If you forget to file that RPI, it costs you $2,500 penalty. Now, don't, don't pay your, don't pay your, don't pay your taxes late.
You can sit back with the mic a little bit, we can actually hear you better.
Okay, good. I want them to hear me too. Don't pay your, don't pay your taxes late, you got a penalty coming. They turn, they turn your, they turn your taxes over to some crony. Now, I, I stood here and I listened at the politicians. Politicians are not people who are honest. Let's get real.
Sir, sir, it's, it's...
Politicians, politicians go with the majority. Politicians go with the majority. There's a, there's 10,000 tenants to every landlord.
Sir, we...
Who you think they're gonna be honest with? Who you think they're gonna be on the side of?
We appreciate your testimony, we appreciate your testimony. We have so many more people to listen to, so thank you so much.
Are my two minutes up already?
Two minutes are out.
Well, I got a lot to say.
Yes, you should.
Got a lot to say.
Sorry about that.
Quit expecting something for nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Let me tell you something. We make, we prioritize. We prioritize. The problem with most people, they don't know how to get their priorities together. Thank you.
Is, is there a Ruben Rojas who hasn't testified yet? Ruben Rojas? I think you see young boy, okay. Mary Gonzalez?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mary, I live in Sunset Park and I've been there, living there...
Can you speak into the mic, ma'am? Thank you. There you go.
I live in Sunset Park and I've been living here, I've been living there for 12 years and I also was always being overcharged by the owner. She never wanted to accept any checks or money or just cash and I only got two leases for the first two years, but every year, the rate would go up every two years. I would ask for a lease, she said I didn't need one. When someone told me to get a copy of the rent history, I could not believe what I saw. She was claiming that I was paying much less meanwhile, I was paying doubled up the amount and when it comes to get repairs done, that was the mission. She complained and would send someone to do a half-assed job. The building is filthy, no one cleans, cleans it. The paint from the wall and the ceiling is chipping and the winter time, some of the rooms get cold and I have to put plastic covers on the window because the windows are so old that you feel the draft do it. She says that if we want a nicer apartment, we could fix it ourselves, which I won't do. My income sometimes is not enough to pay the other bills that I have. I pay more than enough with the overcharge that she was doing and I don't feel that she should get any more than that. It's supposed to be a rent-stabilized apartment, but I feel like I'm paying for a regular apartment and I also asked for a rent freeze. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Thomas Laskaris. Thomas Laskaris. And if I mispronounce, mispronounce that, please.
It's Laskaris, it's a Greek name. Hi. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you for the opportunity. I have to tell you, I spoke a couple of years ago at Cooper Union, but there weren't nearly as many people as there are tonight. And I know I'm outnumbered. I happen to be a landlord. And the first thing I got to say tonight is, I don't think politics should be into this conversation at all. First of all, most of the landlords that I know, I know these people have issues with like management companies that don't take care of things, but most of the landlords that I know take very, very good care of their buildings. And the day that Sandy happened, that Tuesday morning, I had everything running in both my buildings on 104th Street, okay? That same morning, two buildings that were flooded. I was able to get the mechanics in there the same day. We take good care of our properties. If any of my tenants were here, they tell you that, I don't want to pat myself on the back, but, but I'm like a good landlord. And it's like absurd, I mean, you know, everyone's like on some kind of political bandwagon to 0% rent increase this year, you know? I mean, yeah, it's like hip thing to do. Well, it's not realistic and they're hurting themselves if they think that by giving themselves a 0% rent increase, that it's not going to come back to haunt them in the future. We need, we need, you know, good, I mean, realistic increases. 3%, 4%. Come on. Really? Where you going? You need it. I have, I work a job, I get up every day at 4:30 in the morning.
Please let him finish, please let him finish.
I have a child, I have a child with special needs.
Please let him finish.
I have a child with special needs. And, you know, I, and I put a lot of sweat equity in my buildings and so does my partner.
And we appreciate your work and we appreciate your testimony. Thank you, sir. Marcella Metaines, and again, please correct me if I'm mispronouncing any names, and then After the next two people testifying, we'll take a 10-minute break to give our sonographer, who's been working extraordinarily hard, a short break. So two more, two more folks, Marcella Metaines and Adrian Gerstel. 28 and 31.
Thank you. My name is Marcella Metaines and I'm a 35-year resident of Sunset Park, Brooklyn. I moved into 67447th Street, a two-bedroom apartment with my family, in 1979, paying $199. In 2006, my building got a new owner, Jack Geyula. His sole purpose was to displace the long-term immigrant Latino families with low rent. I was one of them. In 2008, I was evicted of my apartment, then paying $635 because I replaced my 30-plus-year-old kitchen cabinets. The landlord claimed I created structural damage to the building. Despite getting evicted, I was determined to use what I learned to help others who were struggling. I became involved with Neighbors Helping Neighbors, a nonprofit organization that provides advocacy and helps tenants organize around common problems. They helped me testify for the first time before the RGB requesting a zero increase back in 2008. It's now 2014 and I stand before you asking again, for the working-class New Yorkers that are being gentrified, I ask for a 0% increase. For the tenants of 461, 465, 46th Street, who got five MCIs within two years totaling over $100 permanent increase, I ask for a 0% increase on their behalf. For the tenants of 430, 64th Street, 61st Street, whose owner changed the building entrance system without getting permission from the state, as is required by owners of rent-stabilized apartments, the owner then charged the tenants $50 per key. These are just two examples of what I see tonight. You've heard some other tenants. I stand before you now as a tenant advocate and organizer, working for Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I sit on the Board of Tenants Political Action Committee and I am now the Chair of the Housing Committee for Community Board 7 in Brooklyn. I was evicted because I was afraid to fight back, but I was determined to make something positive out of a bad situation. The tenants of New York City need a rent relief in the form of a 0% increase.
Thank you for your testimony. So registration closes at 8:00. If anyone hasn't registered to speak, who would like to speak, we ask that you do so now.
Say that in Spanish?
Yeah. I, I feel, I'm so, I wish so much that I had learned Spanish, it is my failing.
Thank you. I will say it in Spanish. Si se quieren registrar para dar su testimonio esta noche, por favor asegúrense de salir a la puerta afuera y registrarse, así pueden tener tiempo para hablar.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Adrian Gerstel and thank you very much for this opportunity to talk and also to hear. and also to hear what a lot of people have to say. This has been very illuminating. And one of the things, there have been a lot of things that come up, came up, I don't exactly have everything written out like everybody else. I am a small owner-occupied RSA building. We have, I have owned the building for about 35 years. I have tenants in there who have been there for about 28 years. We have artists, dancers, playwrights. I feel that it's very important, they pay absolutely nothing for rent practically. We are subsidizing the arts. And we feel very important, we feel it's very important that we have good tenants. That is extremely important to us. And I know that people who have buildings value good tenants, and they will kind of do what they can about the rent, you know, trying to get what they can to, we can't make it work, we're really paying money in to the building. That has a lot to do with the Rent Guidelines Boards and the RSA. That's part of what happens, you know, I accept that. The 0% would be a hardship on a small business owner-occupied, owner 0%. I, you know, I had the thought of if people, and this is even tenants, if people are really serious about the 0%, will they give the homeowners, will they give the tax deferment or rebate to compensate for the increase in our expenses? Is the city and everybody really that serious that they would actually make arrangements so that the increases that we get are really compensated, or really it's not a hardship on us? I think one of the things is, there are things that have come up, like...
You are gonna have to wrap it up, we have to take our break so that our sonographer has time. Your time is up, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.